Call this meeting to order. If everyone could please stand and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Madison.
Here.
Trustee Scalise.
Here.
Trustee Reiser.
Here.
Trustee Kristoferson.
Here.
Trustee Wilson.
Here.
Trustee Galuza is absent. Mayor Baldorman.
Here. All right, Board. The first couple of items that we have today, and I'd like to move six up, are two very different types of occasions why we're here. But they involve people who have dedicated a great deal of their life to our community. First, I would like to present the proclamation remembering Bill Pataki. And all of you, I think new Bill certainly know the Pataki family, their history, their connection to not only New Lennox, but certainly this entire Lincolnway area. So I'd like to read this proclamation. Bill was born February 10th, 1970 in Blue Island to Paul Senior and Carlene Pataki and grew up with his four siblings, Richard, Paul, Mike, and Jackie. As Bill got older, immediately after graduating from Lincolnway High School, he immersed himself in the trades and went to work for his family's HVAC company. Being extremely dedicated to his job, family, and friends, Bill was known for immediately dropping whatever he was doing in order to help those around him when their furnace or AC equipment needed servicing or for whatever else they needed. Bill joined the Mokina Esda in 1993 and worked with them until 1999. In January of 2000, Bill started working with his brother Mike for New Lennox Esda, eventually being promoted to deputy director and remained with New Lennox until his passing this past July. Not only was Bill devoted to his family and friends, but to his duties with Esda as well. His love of the law started very early on in his life, and he memorized everything from the rules of the road to laws and jurisdictions, ultimately influenced by his father, who was a Chicago police officer. Over the course of his Esda career, Bill served under two mayors, two administrators, six police chiefs, dozens of trustees, and hundreds of police and Esda officers. He responded to thousands of call-outs, dedicating tens of thousands of hours in service to his community. With unwavering determination, dedication, and hard work, Bill consistently demonstrated his passion in a role that brought him true joy. To honor his life, not only do we have this proclamation tonight, but I've directed Bill Byerly that all Esda vehicles from this point forward display the graphic WPP 502 and proclaim that badge 502 be retired from New Lennox Esda from this point forward. Therefore, I, Timothy Baldorman, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the village of New Lennox, who hereby honor the life of Bill Pataki and recognize him for a lifetime of enduring passion, dedication, and support to his family and community. Bill really gave up a lot of other things that he could have pursued in his life, both personally and professionally, so he could serve this town. And I know how important that role was to him. His family knew how important that role was to him. And despite struggling with health issues for a good portion of his life, Bill was always there for others, sacrificing himself so he could give to his community, to his friends, and to his family. And so tonight, I'm honored to have his family come up and to present them with this proclamation. You know, your brother would destroy this stuff. He was really good at directing traffic. Are we trying to direct me? All right, can I present this to you here as an extra copy? And if you'd like to say a few words, please feel free.
My idea is, Tim said my brother loved New Lennox probably as much as any place in Central Valley in town. He chose to, I guess, have his legacy here over any other town. And it's really, really important for him for everything to make this the best and safest town possible, whether it's been weather things or traffic or just some sort of criminal element preventing this from happening. But he was 100% in. He loved his New Lennox town. He loved this mayor here, Tim Baldorman. He idolized the guy literally. To his last days, he was, "Are you watching Tim's podcast? It gives so much good information." You know, he was all in. And he just wanted to make it safe for all you people. And everyone that lives here in this town, in this area, he wanted the Lincolnway area to be known, to be the safe area, the best place in the world to be. And I think that he did a pretty good job of contributing to that. We love him. We miss him forever.
As we said in the proclamation, and you heard from his brother, serving the community and working closely with law enforcement was very, very important to Bill. And tonight, we're going to swear in our new police chief and deputy chief, who both knew Bill well, worked closely with him, and were fortunate to have had him serve this community. So again, at our last board meeting, we congratulated Lou Elsundrini on his retirement. And he, of course, being a great leader and team player, is here tonight to see his successor. He's enjoying his retirement. He spent 48 hours in Cleveland, so... Yeah, great choice. All right. At this time, I'd like Micah Nessie to step up, please.
He said, "Call me anytime."
Micah has called New Lennox home since 1985. After graduating from Lincolnway Central High School and attending Joliet Junior College, he fell called to serve and join the United States Air Force in 1998. For seven years, he had the privilege of serving his country before returning home and beginning his law enforcement career with the New Lennox Police Department in 2007. Throughout his time with this department, Micah has been fortunate to serve in a variety of roles: field training officer, detective, SWAT team member, and department-wide trainer, each one teaching him valuable lessons and allowing him to work alongside some of the finest men and women in law enforcement. In 2017, he was promoted to detective sergeant. And in 2020, he was sworn in as deputy chief. He has continued to grow in his profession, earning his graduate degree in administration of justice and security, graduating from the Northwestern School of Police Staff and Command in 2018, and the FBI National Academy in 2024. Opportunities he credits to support and mentorship of others. Outside of his work, Micah considers himself blessed beyond measure. He and his wife have five wonderful children, a son-in-law. He's not wonderful? He's okay? It takes some time. And a soon-to-be daughter-in-law. She's wonderful. His greatest joy in life is spending time with them, and he knows those moments are the ones that truly define a life well-lived. For Micah, serving his community is an honor and one that he is grateful for every day that we have placed the trust in him to do so. So, Micah? I ask you to raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Micah Nessie.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties and responsibilities of police chief.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties and responsibilities of police chief.
In the village of New Lennox, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
In the village of New Lennox, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
And that I will uphold the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And that I will uphold the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the village of New Lennox. So help me God.
And the ordinances of the village of New Lennox. So help me God.
Congratulations.
First, I'll thank the mayor for entrusting me in this position. Village Administrator Kirk Carroll, thank you. Board members, I truly appreciate the trust you've given me to do this. I thank all the men and women of the police department. It's not a lie that I truly get to work with each of you, and I appreciate your support. And I look forward to continuing the success of this police department and moving forward. To my family, all of you, I really appreciate it. I appreciate your love and support and know that I wouldn't be here today without you. And know that as we move forward, I keep you guys in my thoughts at all times, and we all do this together. Lastly, as I said, I moved here in 1985 with my family who got transferred. And I've just been a part of this community for a long time. And moved out a little bit, was in the military, and we decided to come back to this community. My wife is a Frankfurt resident. She's from this community. We're all around here. And it gives me a lot of joy to be able to work here and be a part of the community that is so great as New Lennox. The citizens are great. The village is great. And I look forward to starting this next chapter. Thank you.
Of course, with Micah being promoted to chief, we have an opening for deputy chief. And it's my pleasure to have here tonight Brandon Tilton. Brandon was raised in South Chicago Heights and graduated from Marion Catholic High School in 2009. He went on to attend Lewis University, where he earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. While attending college, he enlisted in the U.S. Army Reserves as a medic and was honorably discharged at the rank of sergeant in 2020. Brandon started his law enforcement career in 2012 with South Chicago Heights Police Department. He was hired by New Lennox PD in 2015 and has held numerous roles within the department to include patrolman, detective, SWAT team member, field training officer, department training instructor, firearms instructor, patrol sergeants, and investigation sergeant. Brandon moved to New Lennox six years ago with his family. He's been married to his wife Becky for 10 years, and they share three beautiful daughters together. So at this time, I ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Brandon Tilton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties and responsibilities of deputy police chief.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties and responsibilities of deputy police chief.
In the village of New Lennox, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
In the village of New Lennox, Illinois, to the best of my ability.
And that I will uphold the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And that I will uphold the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the village of New Lennox. So help me God.
And the ordinances of the village of New Lennox. So help me God.
Congratulations.
Oh, wow. Very honored to stand up here tonight. It's not lost on me that I'm filling a big role and a lot of people to thank for helping me get to this point in my life. So first, I have to thank the mayor and the village board and all the employees of the village. Honestly, I've been here for 10 years, and this village has provided me nothing but opportunity. So I'm very grateful for everything that I've experienced in the 10 years I've been here. Of course, I wouldn't be here without my family. My mom and my dad are here, my wife, my daughters. It's been a busy 10 years, as you can see. But we're really enjoying it. We're residents of the town, so I'm really grateful for this opportunity to give back to my community. So to all my men and women, all the guys I work with on the street, all the patrolmen, everybody that came to see me tonight, traveled near and far, I really appreciate all the support. So thank you very much.
And as we always say, a big thank you, of course, to their parents who raised and anyone else in the family that helped raise such really, really good men of character and integrity. We're fortunate to have them serve here. To their wives and kids, thank you. It's an awful lot of responsibility, an awful lot of time, an awful lot of sacrifice. And clearly, you have your hands full in your own lives and what you do and helping with raising your children. But it's often that people, men and women, who serve in law enforcement are called away at inopportune times and for long periods of times and deal with an awful lot of stress. And they could not do the job that they do if it wasn't for having the love and support of families. So thank you to all of you for providing that for them. We're very, very fortunate to have these great men in leadership positions. And as I look across and I see all the other people who work with our police department and our other first responders, whether they're in the office or out on the street, we've got a tremendous police department here, one that we're honored to support and our community supports because they serve with integrity and professionalism. So to all of you, thank you for being here tonight. And go ahead and enjoy your evening. Thank you. Okay. Next up is our consent agenda, which consists of two items. An ordinance amending village code, electronic message center signs, and gas station canopy signs, second read. An approval of an agreement with iHeartMedia for Christmas and the comments. Does any member wish either of those items to be pulled and discussed separately?
No.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Madison, second by trustee Scalise. If there's nothing further, a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Reiser.
Aye.
Trustee Madison.
Aye.
Trustee Scalise.
Aye.
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Kristoferson.
Aye.
Mayor Baldorman.
Aye, motion carries. Well, wait a minute here.
Thank you to you all.
Of course, thank you.
I'll be so proud.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Robin, do you have something for A or for B? All right. On our order of business, we have consideration of an ordinance disconnecting property, 1369 North Cedar Road, first read, Robin.
Yes, so this is about a 10-acre parcel on the west side of Cedar Road where Lennox Street comes in by Liberty Junior High School. The property was annexed back in 2003. The previous owner had anticipated building a new home on the property and/or connecting to village utilities. A new owner has purchased it, and unfortunately, there had been a fire. So some of the primary residents had burnt down. We still do not have utilities available to the property. It is on the edge of the community. We actually were annexed to the east and to the west, so disconnecting it would not create any difficulties for us to annex other properties in the future. Upon disconnection from the village, it would resort to the county E1 estate zoning, which is consistent with the owner's plans to possibly have some horses on the property. And I know the attorney for the owner is here. If the board has any questions.
Obviously, it's not typical that we'd want anything to detach from the village, but under these circumstances, without the utilities and nothing adjoining this and knowing that myself and this board believe in property owner rights and supporting them when we can, I talked to Robin and Kurt about this. I don't have any issues with it. Are there any questions or concerns that any of you have? No? Okay, so they're good just to have this come back then? Next read, no hurry for that, guess? Can come back next meeting? Okay. All right. All right, then, that's what we'll do. Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have consideration for approval of a resolution approving a right-of-way use agreement for broadband internet service with Delta Communications does business as Clearwave Fiber. Robin?
Yes, so this right-of-way use agreement was put together with the assistance of our legal counsel. And in this case, Clearwave is planning to come through the entire village with fiber optic and broadband internet service. So this is an agreement for them to place their infrastructure within our rights-of-way. It is a 10-year agreement with up to four additional five-year renewal periods. Unfortunately for us, the state statute precludes us from charging any fees or franchise fees or permit fees for this. But the agreement, like I said, has been worked on with legal counsel. And the agreement, this map would be attached to the agreement because they would start with our existing municipal boundaries, but it would also go into effect as we grow and create new developments or annex additional property. They would be able to expand their service area consistent with our boundaries.
All right, and we get other companies that try to come in and meet with us, too, right? Does this preclude?
This, it is not exclusive, no.
You do have to be careful about how much right-of-way that's being taken off, but it doesn't exclude others. We just would have to be careful in how the right-of-way is.
Right, and I know there is a representative from Clearwave here. If the board has any questions.
Well, but I mean, before we get to that, if the board does, how do we determine when, you know, there's enough, you know, there's no more right-of-way to give? Or, I mean, why?
We would review as it was submitted. It's like anything else. If there were, we had similar when there was the discussion of when AT&amp;T came in to provide cable. There was only certain access ways. There are certain ways they would have to go. So we would have to do an analysis. There would be, where could they go on the right-of-way to provide the services that they're providing? They're saying. And we have had some companies that are not interested in doing the whole town. This one is nice because you're bringing competition to the whole community. And also, Robin and Brian Williams did a very nice job. Part of the negotiation was that they would provide services back free of charge to a number of our sites as well. So this is a good deal.
Yeah, I don't object to it. I like to see, you know, competition and have that there. But how are we going to ensure restoration, notification of residents?
It's part of in the agreement. It's part of they did. They went by the state law, which I will have to say has been watered down by the state law. But we have, they have stepped up. And the agreement that was sent by Spasia and Taylor was actually very good. They accepted the changes to that. So I think we're in as good a shape as we possibly can.
As we can be.
They do have to provide a bond.
They will provide a bond.
They would provide a bond to cover restoration and any damage.
Do we have timing in there when they have to restore? Because if they're going to go through the whole community... We had this question the last time when someone talked about this. I don't want it to be where the restoration crew comes in after they're done doing the whole town.
I thought I saw 30 days. Was it 30 days?
30 days.
From the time they disturb.
They have to restore any within 30 days?
Correct, and we also put language in here making sure that it included any impacts to residents, mailboxes, sprinkler systems that may be within the right-of-way as well.
Okay, with proper notification when they're doing work.
Correct.
And permitting through us, even though we may not be able to charge.
Correct.
So we'll be, okay. All right, any questions from the board? So we, oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Jim.
So we already have AT&amp;T on the ground, right? I don't know if it's owned from the company. What, how many fiber cables can we have in there before it starts crossing signals and you can't have too many under there? Is it going to be too close to the AT&amp;T wires where our AT&amp;T customers will lose signal? I work for a cable company, right? So I'm not an engineer, so it's not my forte. But I know if you have too many cables too close to one another, the signal can get jammed up to where you can't put it through the cable officially. So is it going to be close? Is there enough room for this cable, AT&amp;T, and possibly other competitors to be in the right-of-way parkway without disturbing services for people who have other options?
They will be submitting their plans. That will be analyzed. It's also whenever you cross any of our utilities, of all the utilities, we have to take a look at all of it to make sure, one, it isn't interfering with the other services, plus our own services as well. So there'll be analysis before they go in there. They will submit the plans, and they'll be reviewed by our engineering staff and/or if we need some consultant also.
All right, I don't know anything about cable, but other than what I have now is too expensive. But is there, is there some remedy? All right, so Jim is bringing up a point. If they do something and it causes some interference, I certainly wouldn't happen on purpose. But if something like that happens, is there some sort of remedy for that or?
Well, that, in my understanding, is regulated by the FCC.
If they're causing disruption... So again, I'm assuming that Jim has dealt with this issue before. So we'll just use AT&amp;T lines they're in, and they put this in. And all of a sudden, AT&amp;T customers start having problems. The FCC couldn't care less. What are we going to do to take care of our residents?
You've got a clause in here that says they can't interfere.
Okay.
So I guess we're going to be in the position of enforcing.
Enforcing that with, okay, with whatever.
And that's why the agreement is key because now we've got a pre-约定 contract.
Sure.
Which means we can, if we have to, we can force.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, Brian. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, Robin, you said it was a 10-year agreement, is that right?
With four 20, or four or five-year extensions.
I'm just curious, typically, so say the 10 years goes by and whether it be you guys or us decide we don't want to continue. You guys are putting in your own infrastructure, conduits, fiber, that sort of thing. I'm assuming that all just remains on the ground at that point, correct?
All right. Okay, someone want to step forward to answer?
Yeah, I apologize.
No, 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 it's good. Here, come on, please, and just state your name for the record. Thank you. And if you could answer, trustee Reiser.
Absolutely. Charles Lawrence with Clearwave Fiber. Great to meet you, and thank you for having us.
Of course.
Mayor Baldorman, members of the board. Yeah, so if for any reason the agreement terminates, I believe there's language in there that either allows us and I think either the infrastructure will stay there or can be removed, but in all likelihood, it would just stay there. And just, can I answer one other question?
Sure, please.
So all of our plant goes in with conduit. So there's no direct buried lines. So everything was in plastic tubing, and then we have our wires, our lines that go through there. 100% of our infrastructure is wireline. It's fiber optic cables. So to my knowledge, I think I've never heard of sort of interference happening because it's 100% hardwire and our cables should never and will never touch our competitors again, as Mr. Carroll said, because of the way we're going to be permitting to make sure that our infrastructure is kind of not hitting anyone else's.
Yeah, no, and I'm, again, not an engineer. Just work for the company. It doesn't have to go through the line in there. If you have too many fiber optic cables that are close together, If you have too many fiber optic cables that are close together, there's a limit to how many you can have within a region of each other before they start. The signal still goes through the conduit. So you can only have so many around each other before the signal starts bouncing back and forth between the other cables because it still goes through there. I know I'm not speaking in the technical terms, but I know that's, there is a limit how many cable, fiber optic cables can put through an area before the signal starts going through the other cables.
Yeah, so that has never occurred for us, but again, I think that we would be very cognizant of making sure that we're not going to be anywhere close to any facilities that would perhaps put any of that at risk.
All right. Other questions or comments? So what is your anticipated timeline of all those?
So from formal acceptance of the agreement and execution of the agreement, we would begin our design work, that should take anywhere from call it approximately 60 to 90 days.
Okay.
From there, we would generally speaking allocate approximately 30 days to get the first permit submission done, to ensure that it's done in accordance with both the terms of the agreement and also ensuring that any way the village wants, you know, anything the village wants on there is part of it. And then we would begin construction at that point. So call it anywhere from 90 to 120 days from the moment we execute this agreement, we would be beginning our construction efforts. And given the size of the village, we anticipate those construction efforts would last approximately 18 months, give or take.
All right, well, that's in the middle of winter, so I mean, I guess it's weather dependent, right?
Absolutely, and again, you know, the pace at which we go is obviously dependent entirely in partnership with the municipality and making sure that we, you know, moving at a pace that works for you guys and for us and for the residents.
And how do you notify all the residents that, in the area where you're going to be working?
Yeah, so very shortly after we execute this agreement, we'll begin kind of making announcements just broad-based to kind of get our name out there and introduce Clearwave Fiber to the, to the community. As part of that, we also will be sure to attend any community events that occur and really sort of begin to enmesh ourselves in the community. That's really something that we take very seriously. Then we will begin on social media as well. In terms of formal notification, about three to four weeks before construction commences, we will send our first mailing, which is generally speaking a postcard. It has a QR code and a link and phone number to our construction website with FAQs and ability to submit complaints, other telephonic or issues or questions telephonically or on the web. About two weeks, two to three weeks prior to construction, we will then door-tag every single door that we're going to be walking past. Then about a week or so before construction begins, we will place signs in the right-of-way that will indicate that Clearwave Fiber is coming. And then throughout the entire construction process, all construction vehicles will be marked with Clearwave Fiber decals and kind of indicating whether they're authorized contractors, individual who work for Clearwave Fiber. Throughout the entire process, we also will be in very tight coordination with village staff. So what that will look like is everything from every week, we will be sending, or every day, rather, we will be sending what we call street sheets, which indicate the parts of the village that we're working in, down to the exact street level. We also will hold weekly calls if the village staff is vouted to attend, explaining what we're doing and hold coordination. So very, we will be very active from kind of the moment we execute this agreement.
All right, that's, that's good, sounds like a good plan. All right, any other questions?
Yeah, one other quick question. I would assume that as far as the installation is concerned, most if not all of it is probably bi-directional boring?
Yes, correct.
Okay, great.
Okay. All right, excellent. If there's nothing else, we'll bring that back down.
Perfect.
It's a resolution.
Oh, you look for it now?
It's a resolution.
Oh, yeah, it's a resolution, okay. All right, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second. Motion by trustee Christopherson, second by trustee Risers. There's nothing further, a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Mattson?
Aye.
Trustee Risers?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Scalise?
Aye.
Trustee Christopherson?
Aye.
Mayor Baldwin?
I motion carries, okay, good luck.
Absolutely, thank you all.
Thank you. All right, next up is consideration for approval proposal drain installation, kids' work, children's museum. We, you're all aware of this, but it's back here for your formal approval. Mark?
Yeah, once we installed the playground area and then the matting went down, in order to keep it handicap accessible, there's, there's a bit of a ramp there leading right towards the doors, so anytime we got a heavy rain, it was getting in under the doors. Staff looked at it, decided we needed to put in a drain right there. We got two quotes, one from the original company that worked out there and then contractor we use pretty regularly, Alec Plumbing. They had the lowest price, they were able to get out there the next day, at night when the museum was closed, get that drain in, which came in pretty handy because we got a pretty good rain a day or two later, so. Yeah, just asking for formal approval for $15,316.
All right, any questions for Mark on that? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Scalise, second by trustee Mattson. There's nothing further, a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Christopherson?
Aye.
Trustee Scalise?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Risers?
Aye.
Trustee Mattson?
Aye.
Mayor Baldwin?
I motion carries. All right, next up is consideration for approval of a change order for fusion wall addition for the Crossroads Sports Complex. Requesting for a change order to install fusion padding to cover the exposed concrete in the backstop areas on five of the sports fields. Total purchased install for all five fields are $27,000. Any questions on that? Is there a motion to approve the change order?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Christopherson, second by trustee Scalise. There's nothing further, a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Christopherson?
Aye.
Trustee Mattson?
Aye.
Trustee Scalise?
Aye.
Trustee Risers?
Aye.
Mayor Baldwin?
I motion carries. Next is consideration for approval of resolution authorizing a sponsorship agreement with Sports Huddle for the sports complex. It's a three-year agreement, they'll provide free staff apparel and merchandise for the length of the agreement, up to $6,500 per year. Sports Huddle will receive one interior sign within the park and digital logo on the website, so it's a good deal for everybody. Any questions on it?
They do a good job there too, I've utilized them before.
Good, excellent. All right, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Scalise, second by trustee Christopherson. If there's nothing further, a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Risers?
Aye.
Trustee Mattson?
Aye.
Trustee Scalise?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Christopherson?
Aye.
Mayor Baldwin?
I motion carries. Okay, you're all familiar with this. Next is consideration ordinance implementing a municipal grocery retailer tax and municipal grocery service occupant, occupation tax. You all know that Governor Pritzker and the state of Illinois eliminate at the end of this year the 1% grocery tax, which was very kind of them considering it was our money and not theirs. I don't see them giving any of their sales tax back. Once again, this is our money that they're constantly dwiddling away, whether it's our LGDF, whether it's our MFT money. We get less and less and less from the state of our money that was promised to us. And in this particular case, they eliminated this grocery tax, which for our community, you know, not only do we have multiple grocery stores, we have Pete's that's progressing nicely over there. This would cost us in excess of a million dollars that we need for our budget. So most municipalities are passing this tax. I can't believe I'll say this, they at least did give us the option to be able to do this. How kind of them. But it was nothing more than a political play by the governor at our expense, when we are the ones at the local level that are providing all the services. This is typical Illinois. Schools educate kids, but the state imposes all kind of unfunded mandates and rules and policies that make it more difficult for them, which then of course falls back on the taxpayers who have to pay for those things. I talked about the different revenue sources that we get from the state that are getting smaller and smaller by the year, yet we're the ones that have to plow the streets, patrol the streets, take care of the village hall services, provide clean water. It's politics. It's nothing more than politics by a guy that wants to run for president. Solid as. So it's, it's up here tonight. Like I said, the majority of the communities, all the ones that I'm aware of are passing this. We need to, if we're going to do it, do it by the end of this month so we can get on the rolls, so it stays in place for January 1. Again, if we don't do it, got to find a million plus every year to provide services, which one way or the other, either the taxpayers continue to pay what they've been paying or they lose out on services in this community. Nobody likes to tax, but my position's always been, look and see what your unit of government is doing with your tax money. I mean, that's how we survive, where there's no money tree. We get very, very little property taxes a village. Our money comes primarily through sales tax. And we're investing in our community and because we, meaning this board, staff, and taxpayers, are spending our money to invest in this community, to make money, the biggest portion of which goes to the state, this always falls back on the residents. And that's why Illinois, people are fleeing Illinois more than any other state. We have the highest property taxes in the country, and it's because of inefficient, ineffective, political game-playing in Springfield and nothing else. So this is before you tonight for First Read. Are there any comments or questions on it?
Just one, I think it's going to be important that we have a plan and place to educate our residents too, as to why we're having to place a local grocery tax to, you know, basically take the place of a state tax that's being taken away, so that you're not having to argue with people on Facebook.
I will anyway.
I know you will, I know you will, but I think it's important that people have an understanding maybe ahead of time that, you know, when they go to Jewel in, in January and they see another tax on their receipt.
They won't. It's the same tax.
Okay.
Nothing, that's why we're doing this now, nothing changes.
Okay, that helps.
It's not an additional tax.
Okay.
It's a tax that...
I realize it's not additional, but it's, it's a local taking the place of a state or...
Well, it, it was our tax anyway.
Mm-hmm, okay.
But he decided, it's funny, because this is the guy that gets all spun up when the federal government tries to tell him as a governor what he should be doing in a state. He says that's not your business, it's my business. But he wants to tell us as municipal leaders what we should be doing in our town and not, and not do. So again, there's plenty of state tax.
Yeah.
6%.
Yeah.
He could have given one of those pennies up. Why didn't he just take 5% for the state and leave us alone? He's got a $55 billion budget that he can't pay. He's got a state that's sinking financially. And so, no, our taxpayers will see no difference, we're not doing anything...
It's not listed on the receipt.
No, no. We're not doing anything that isn't already there. We just have to take action.
Yeah.
Because he took away our tax. If he would have taken away a penny from the state and said, if you want to add that, go ahead, we wouldn't. But he's not going to send us road crews to plow our streets or state police officers to patrol our streets. It's, it's, listen, you all know me, I, we all entitled to our own personal political beliefs, but I don't do that as the mayor. I have never done that as the mayor. I'm not interested in D or R or any of that other nonsense. Whoever's doing the job and doing it right is who I support. There are people from both sides of the aisle that I have supported as mayor because they're taking care of our community and doing, doing good things for our community. But this guy has done more damage to local government than any governor that I've served under. The hypocrisy is beyond belief. So no, nobody will notice any difference, it's just a shame. Like I said, he had plenty of opportunities to take one of his pennies away, but of course not. Any other questions or comments on it?
So the local one won't go into effect until next year when the state won?
It's in effect now, and it is soon, if we didn't take action, then January 1st it would drop off.
Yeah, so there's...
But it just remains, correct.
And is there a sunset on there? So if and when the state says they're going to reestablish this, we drop our local one?
Well, no, they, they wouldn't, believe me, they're never going to give us another penny. This, this is, this is, they're just taking ours away and gate, we're kind enough to give us the right to put it back. But he could say politically, well, I tried. I tried to take a penny off. Well, sure, you tried to take our penny off. That's like saying, hey, Jim, do me a favor, buy my family dinner tonight. You say, no, well, I tried. I tried to get, I tried to feed your kids, but Jim wouldn't do it.
So if he comes back and brings back in the grocery tax later on, that won't affect this local one, or the local one when they go away, or that, if the state brings back the grocery tax, that would just replace this?
If, if the state added another penny on and said municipalities, out of the goodness of our heart, we're going to give you another penny?
Yeah.
Yeah, then we could take whatever action we want. There is a much greater likelihood that I'm going to beat Michael Jordan in a one-on-one game of basketball than that ever happened.
Nothing's impossible, I just want to do that, I don't want double-dipping now and double-dipping in the future.
I hope we're in that position that, no, this doesn't sunset, it's gone.
Yeah.
And so, but if for whatever reason the state decided to be generous and give us free money, this board could always look, as we have always done, we have found other ways to take care of our residents. For example, people don't even remember, probably before many of you lived in this town, we had pet tags and vehicle stickers, which you think are no big deal, but Kim will tell you, when we eliminated that 13 years ago, we eliminated about a half million dollars out of our budget. We gave a half million dollars back to our people by not charging them vehicle stickers and pet tags and everything else, and the tickets, the revenue that we generated from parking tickets for people not having vehicle stickers. So if for some reason the state was benevolent and gave us additional funding, we as a board could say, okay, we're flushed with cash now because the state gave us money, how can we take care of our residents? So we'd always have that option.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, it's not free money, it's our, it's our money that was going to it.
Right.
So I just want to make sure that we don't fall in the same issue the state is where we get comfortable and then you have another one's like, oh, we're not going to give it back, like, as long as there's no double-dipping, as long as eventually when it gets down to it, if he does give it back to us, we go back to ground zero, we'll say.
Yeah, well, yeah, I am very comfortable that for as long as I live, that wouldn't happen. But if they did, then we would do whatever the board wanted to do. Absolutely, absolutely. And that LGDF is, what are we at now? Six, seven, five? When we were at 10? So we were at 10%, and now we're at 6.75%. And there's an example of a Democrat, Anthony DeLuca, who works incredibly hard to get, he's a former mayor, to get LGDF back to where it should be, but of course it's going nowhere. It's going nowhere. If we had all that money, there's a lot of things that we could do. If the schools were funded the way they were supposed to be funded, getting at least 50% of their revenue from the state of Illinois, but New Lennox schools get 10% and 11%? Could you imagine how the property taxes could drop if the state followed the Constitution and provided a simple majority of funding for public education, but instead our schools get 20% of what they should be getting? Honestly, I don't know anyone that stays here other than they have family or a job, but this is why. So yes, our board will always do what we can do fiscally. You know, we're, we're looking at sales tax, we have a sales tax, you know? We collect sales tax revenue, that's where we get it. We get 4% of our, of the property tax bill roughly comes to us, which is nothing. So we make our money off sales tax. So if we go to nine and a half percent, you know, on the sales tax, that, we're taking that money and we're investing it in our town. And what a, that's, we're building a sports, we're not building a sports complex because we're a rec center. we're a rec center. We're building a sports complex because we're going to bring hotels and restaurants, and that will not only pay for what we have, create jobs, bring people here, but then have access funds to do more for our residents. Whatever revenue we bring in as the village, we are investing it back in our town. We're not squandering it on nonsense. We're providing services and amenities for our community. They are giving billions to non-residents of the state of Illinois, not to mention, we don't have enough time today to, to go through all the waste that that state does. So yes, as I said earlier, we, every body of government lives off taxes. That's it. I mean, that's all you get. It's what are you doing with those taxes? Well, we're providing the very best services. I think we all agree. There's not a better police department, not a better public works department, not a better village hall staff. I mean, we, we are providing, we're providing amenities for our people. That's what we do with it, so we can justify why we do what we do. We could run lean. We could not have the tax increases or the taxes that we have, but there goes your quality of life. We're building a new wastewater treatment plant. We're investing a hundred million dollars, over a hundred million dollars in that infrastructure and new water lines. That's what we do with tax money. Nobody likes it. Nobody likes to pay more in taxes. Nobody likes to pay a higher water bill, but they like to drink clean water. They like to see how much their home is worth. People want to live here because we invest our money. The state squanders it. And then, when they squander enough, they take from us. So. Anything else?
This could have been a podcast episode.
Oh, it's going to be.
I bet it was.
I have a couple of Democrat state representatives who have agreed to come in to discuss this and many other issues. To their credit, they're willing to come in and discuss it.
Yeah.
But I'd love to hear the answers.
And you're going to keep that under thirty minutes, huh?
Not a chance. I think I didn't keep this under. All right. Any other questions on that? All right, thank you. Next, we have consideration for approval of an extension of a contract commuter lot snow removal with Bisping Construction. Mark?
Seems odd to be talking about this now, but winter is coming up. Bisping's plowed snow at our commuter lot for the last, or since 2020, done a great job. Have not raised their, their prices at all during that time. This year they are asking for a five percent increase due to rising salt and labor costs. Based on our three-year average, it costs about twelve hundred dollars, twelve hundred and forty-five dollars per year. So I'm recommending extended contract for twelve months with the five percent increase.
All right, very good. Any questions for Mark on that? All right. If not, is there a motion to approve the extension of the contract?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Reiser, second by trustee Scalise. There's nothing further, a roll call, vote please.
Trustee Mattson.
Aye.
Trustee Reiser.
Aye.
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Scalise.
Aye.
Trustee Christopherson.
Aye.
Mayor Baldorman.
I motion carries. Okay, next up, we have, I'm, I'm looking to appoint, we had an opening on a plan commission. Stephen Poz is a restaurant, a resident rather. I had a meet with Robin, had a good conversation. She felt confident in his ability to serve in this role, and so I'm asking for your approval on his appointment to the plan commission. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Mattson, second by trustee Wilson. There's nothing further, a roll call, please.
Trustee Christopherson.
Aye.
Trustee Scalise.
Aye.
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Reiser.
Aye.
Trustee Mattson.
Aye.
Mayor Baldorman.
I motion carries. We have a concert this weekend, Andy Grammer, which will be nice. Tickets still available, please show up. Should be nice weather, we hope. Never know. Also, do you guys want me to talk you a little bit more about the state? I'm happy to do that.
Can we do it after the meeting?
Yeah, we could do it after the meeting. All right, that's all I have tonight. Village attorney?
I'll record.
All right, thank you. Village administrator?
Just very quickly, three things. Is, you and I talked, Mayor, there's no need for council of the whole for next Monday. Two of the village's investments I wanted to bring up to date in your packet, Beth Alderson, and let you know that through ten months, we are already up to sixty-five thousand visitors to our new children's museum. In the past, their best year was forty thousand, so we have two, two months left, and we've already had more than they've ever had in the past. Also, this last weekend at the sports facilities, Scott shared with us that we had our best food and beverage over the weekend. We had, I know the mayor was out there welcoming the attendees out there, and we had our best food and beverage this last weekend. So I think both those projects are going, going forward and...
Yeah, they're, they're doing well. Doing really well. All right, thank you. All right, payroll and disbursements. Trustee Mattson?
Yes, sir. I make the motion to approve our bi-monthly disbursements in the amount of two million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty cents. In addition to these disbursements, approval is needed for a payroll in the amount of five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-six cents, paid on August eighth, twenty twenty-five, and a payroll in the amount of six hundred and twelve dollars, paid on July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, and that is in a form of a motion.
And I will second that.
Okay, motion's been properly moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Roll call, vote please.
Trustee Mattson.
Aye.
Trustee Reiser.
Aye.
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Scalise.
Aye.
Trustee Christopherson.
Aye.
Mayor Baldorman.
I motion carries. Anything else, Keith?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Questions, comments from the floor? Ma'am? Are you pleased to step up and state your name for the record? Thank you.
My name's Sharon White. I'm very excited about this sports complex. I think it was a great idea. It's going to do great things for our community, bring money in, everything. I just have one comment I would like to share.
Sure.